Let music swell the breeze and rain on all the trees. Sky free of song. Let morsels come to wake, let all the rain. Let lost and spent hours still roll on. for purple mountains majesties above the fruit and plant. America, America, God shed his grace on thee. And crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Oh beautiful, for patriot's dream that sees beyond the years. But all our master cities, God, honored by your red tears. America, America, God shed his grace on thee. And crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Lift every voice and sing, so earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing burst high as the listening stars. Let us resume wide as the rolling sea. Sing a song full of the faith that the door pass has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the blessing has brought on us. Facing the rising sun of our new day's beacon. Let us march on till victory is won. Stewie the rod we try, bitter the chest in rot. Though in the days when hope unworn and died. Wherever setting ye have not our weary feet. Come to the place where your father's side. We have come over a way left with tears and water. We have come trading the present and the blood at the slaughter. Out from the gloomy past, you'll be standing at last. Where the breaking of a bright star is cast. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans white with foam. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. Sleep, child, do not be afraid, for we are watching over you. Thunder and peace until tomorrow, sleep till the morning light. You are the future, you are the promise of a dawn that's fresh and new. You are the hope of all the world tonight. May your dreams all come true while you're gently sleeping. When you are grown, you will find all the worlds in your keeping. We will guide you, stand beside you, and together we will find. Living tomorrow, beautiful and bright. Sleep, child, and peace, oh send thee all through the night. Darling angels, God will send thee all through the night. From the drowsy hours of creeping, hill and valley, summer's sneaking. All the loving, little keeping, all through the night. Sleep, child, do not be afraid, for we are watching over you. All through the night. You are the future, you are the promise of a dawn that's fresh and new. May your dreams all come true while you're gently sleeping. When you are grown, you will find all the worlds in your keeping. We will guide you, stand beside you, and together we will find. Living tomorrow, beautiful and bright. You are the grand old flag, you're a high flying flag. And forever in peace may you wave. You're the emblem of the land of love, the home of the free and the brave. Every heart beats true under red, white, and blue. Where there's never a false hope. But your old acquaintance be forgot, keep your eye on the grand old flag. You're a grand old flag, you're a high flying flag. And forever in peace may you wave. You're the emblem of the land of love, the home of the free and the brave. Every heart beats true under red, white, and blue. Where there's never a false hope. But your old acquaintance be forgot, keep your eye on the grand old flag. Keep your eye on the grand old flag. Sometimes in our lives, we all have pain, we all have sorrow. But if we are wise, we know that there's always tomorrow. Lean on me when you're not strong, I'll be your friend. I'll help you carry on, for it won't be long. Till I'm gonna need somebody to lean on. Please swallow your pride if I have things you need to borrow. For no one can fill those of your needs that they won't let show. Lean on me when you're not strong, I'll be your friend. I'll help you carry on, for it won't be long. Till I'm gonna need somebody to lean on. Just call on me, brother, when you need a hand. We all need somebody to lean on. I just might have a problem, that you'll understand. We all need somebody to lean on. Lean on me when you're not strong, I'll be your friend. I'll help you carry on, for it won't be long. Till I'm gonna need somebody to lean on. You just call on me, brother, when you need a hand. We all need somebody to lean on. I just might have a problem, that you'll understand. We all need somebody to lean on. Lean on me. There is a load you have to bear, that you can't carry on. Ride up the road, and I'll share your load, if you just call me.
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to thank Benjamin Tasker Middle School Singers under the direction of Lisa Miller Delighty for their wonderful performances. My name is Reginald Delahay, and I'm a student at Bowie High School. My GPA is a 3.6, and I am the Executive Board President of Bowie High School as well as the Head of Product Development at Camille Gabrielle. This year, I am taking AP Literature and AP Art History. My plans for the future are to attend the Fashion Institute of Technology and major in fashion merchandise management. My long-term goal is to become a product developer for a major menswear line. I am a PGCPS student, and I am ready for college. Now, I want to welcome you to the October 23rd, 2012 Prince George's County Board of Education meeting. Highlights this evening will include a discussion on the options for use of the Old Greenbelt Middle School and an update on the 2012 Bridge to Excellence Master Plan. Please keep checking www.pgcps.org for Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the October 23rd Board of Education meeting will begin.
To the October 23rd, 2012 meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Please turn off your wireless communications, as they tend to interfere with the taping of the meeting. On behalf of my colleagues, I want to also thank the Benjamin Tasker Middle School Singers under the direction of Ms. Lisa Miller Delighty for their welcoming choral selections. Thank you so much. I also want to thank Mr. Reginald Delahay, our 12th grade student and president of the Student Government Association Executive Board at Bowie High School for the introduction of tonight's meeting. And also, congratulations to you, Mr. Delahay, for your accomplishments. Colleagues, I also want to acknowledge the Honorable Lita Mack, Councilmember, City of Greenbelt, Maryland, in the audience. Thank you. At this time, we will have the board prayer by Ms. Hugh Banks and the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jackson, call the rule, please.
Ms. Armwood?
Here.
Mrs. Beck?
Present.
Ms. Boston?
Present.
Mr. Barrows?
Present.
Ms. Hugh Banks?
Here.
Ms. Waller?
Present.
Ms. Amid?
Present.
Ms. Higgins?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to acknowledge our city manager from Greenbelt, Mike McLaughlin. Mr. McLaughlin. Thank you. Colleagues, prior to adoption of the agenda, please note the following changes. Item 3.8, Amendment of Amendments, and item 3.9 has been added to the board meeting agenda. And item 13.1, Ratification of the Prince George's County Educators Association Contract. That has been added as an emergency item. This item was voted on in closed session, however, it will be required to have a vote in public session. May I please have a motion to adopt the October 23rd, 2012 board meeting agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Barrows. Thank you, Ms. Hugh Banks. It's been properly moved in second for adoption of the agenda. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, the motion pass. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve the amended September 20, 2012 board meeting minutes? Thank you, Ms. Boston. Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved in second that we approve the board meeting minutes for September 20 of 2012. All in favor? Any objections or abstentions? Saying none, the motion pass. We will now have a news break entitled Self-Sustaining Studies.
I really want to make a lasting impact on my school.
Eight Prince George's County public schools recently began a competition to see if they could do just that, as their teams are going to come up with a plan to improve the sustainability of their high school campus.
We found that it would be a great opportunity for them to get involved in another environmental piece outside of what they typically do on a school day.
The folks that run Camp Schmidt are helping out with the competition and see this as a logical marriage to what students learn when they visit Camp Schmidt as 5th graders.
Camp Schmidt, we kind of think we're throwing a wide net and see how many we can catch. And here, we can kind of hone in on those kids that really have an interest, a passion about environmental sustainability. So this is that perfect opportunity where we can take it one step further, actually, two steps further. I think this is just such a superb opportunity for our kids.
The students are tasked with finding ways in their own schools that can help the environment and the next generation that follows.
Even if we don't win, we're going to be a lot more aware of our environment and our school and how we can improve it. I really want to show everybody how, just how the environment can be affected by the things that we do. So by us coming up together, not just my team, but all the teams, by us coming up together and for us just to branch out different ideas, just for us to save money, one, and to save the planet and each other.
The students are not on their own. Employees from Granger are serving as mentors. The Environmental Protection Agency is helping, and each team has a group of Howard University students to provide guidance throughout the project with regular meetings at the team's respective schools. One Howard student won't need directions, as Danielle DeCosta is helping out with her alma mater, Eleanor Roosevelt High School.
I am super excited. I think I'm the only person in the honors program of about 100 students who has their high school here. So the opportunity to work with my alma mater is just great. And it just so happens that my stepsister is on the team, so that makes it even better. But I'm really glad that I get to reach out to my school and kind of help my students, help the students at Eleanor Roosevelt, develop and learn about sustainability, see what I can share with them, hopefully, get them to learn about Howard as well, and maybe hopefully want to go here, because Eleanor Roosevelt is a great school, and so is the Howard University School of Business. And I would just love to see really someone come and follow in my footsteps and really gain the great experience that I've had here.
Danielle, a senior honors student at Howard sees this issue as one that bonds her and the current crop of PGCPS students.
Sustainability is really the issue of our generation, something that we feel that we can have an impact on in the future. And Eleanor Roosevelt students, they're very talented, they're very smart, they're very forward-looking. And so, to see them come here, it's really great to be able to work with them and kind of pick their brains, to see what their ideas are and how they can help improve the future.
No matter what these students go on to do, they see protecting the environment as part of their future.
I also enjoy architecture, and designing green buildings would be perfect. I will go to college for music education. So, and for music, for music, you could really do, like, reusing different instruments to make better instruments, reusable instruments, stuff like that. So I think, especially with the field I'm about to go into, it could really help me.
Perhaps some of the ideas they come up with in this competition will be implemented at their own school.
Because it's a competition, it's going to push people to do even better, so that these solutions will make a lasting impact. And looking back at this, like, I remember I did that. Yeah, I helped the environment and stuff like that. I was like, wow, I'm proud of myself. That's how I'm going to look back at it.
The top three teams in the competition will receive scholarship money that could be up to $6,000.
And to be honest, we want our teams to win as well.
The winning teams will be selected on March 23rd after the final presentations are done at Howard. For Channels 96 and 38, I'm Grant Kittleson.
Congratulations on self-sustaining studies. What a great opportunity for our students. We're looking forward to the outcomes on that, Dr. Curly. The Washington Redskins Charitable Foundation and the United Way of the National Capitol area teamed up at Hollywood Elementary School to host Hometown Huddle. It's a health and fitness clinic. More than 700 students listened as Redskin players Brandon Banks and Joshua Morgan spoke about living a healthier lifestyle. Students also participated in exercises to promote living and active lifestyle. Hometown Huddle is a part of the United Way campaign, which launched in 1999. In August, the United Way was awarded a physical education grant from the United States Department of Education. And this was designed to expand this program to 15 elementary schools in Prince George's County, and it will help to provide healthy activities for students over the next three years. Over the weekend, participating schools teamed up with hundreds of Prince George's County volunteers, businesses, and community members to take part in our annual Clean Up, Green Up event. It was Saturday, October 20th, and it was designed to beautify 60 neighborhood school sites. Activities were planned for 200 sites throughout the county and include cleanups, landscaping, and tree shrubs, and boll plantings. Clean Up, Green Up is held in collaboration with Keep Prince George's County Beautiful. The event represents a shared commitment to making the county cleaner and greener and a great place to work and play. Board Member Henry Armwood has been appointed as Chair of the Federal Relations Network. This was done through the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, but it's also through the National School Boards Association's Federal Relations Network, which is involved with local school board members. The focus, the congressional district in the country, is committed to grassroots advocacy and education of our nation's public school children. The ultimate goal of FRN, as it's known, is to advocate and to make public education a top priority at the federal government level. As a Federal Relations Network member and a school board member, members are specially chosen by their state association to carry out public education message and to cultivate a year-long relationship with members of Congress and their staff. Congratulations, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Amber Waller was presented with an award of completion of the Maryland Association of Board of Education Leadership One Program during the annual Mabe Conference in October. Ms. Waller sits on the Mabe Conference Planning Committee, and this committee establishes the program, selects the speakers, and determines the program schedule for the annual conference. The committee also meets approximately six times a year and provides assistance during this conference. Congratulations, Ms. Waller. On October 2nd, 2012, the board met in an emergency executive session. The board was presented with an emergency situation regarding the approval of additional work to be completed at the site at Oxon Hill High School replacement. The Superintendent of Schools prepared a recommendation for the meeting of September 20 of 2012 for the board to approve the award of the contract to add artificial turf to the scope of the school replacement project. This contract was recommended to be awarded to Hess Construction and Engineering Services. The budget agenda was pulled from the meeting's agenda, the budget agenda item, excuse me, was pulled from that meeting's agenda and was to be acted upon at the board meeting today. However, Hess Construction advised the administration that if the board did not take action prior to October 4th, 2012, the price of the materials and other costs would increase. And that increase would have been above the board-approved award amount. In addition, because Hess Construction is the contractor for the school replacement project, they had begun work preparing the field for installation in September 2012, and the area was ready for installation of the turf. To avoid increased costs and to keep the school replacement project on schedule, the board approved the award of contract in the form of a change order to Hess Construction. The board action summary and related materials are included in part of today's agenda under "Old Business." The board appreciates the contribution of $600,000 from the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning towards the cost of installation of the artificial turf field. And we look forward to use of the field by our school system and community. Please join me in a moment of silence for Moses Robinson, Compliance Specialist, Special Education. Thank you. Upcoming events: On November 8th, 2012, is a system oversight meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education, and the topic is human resources. On December 13th, we On December the 13th, we have our capital improvement program and finance audit and budget meeting, and that's scheduled at 5:00 PM here at the Sasser Building. If you're interested in speaking at a board meeting, please call two and a half hours prior to the meeting's scheduled time. That number is 301-952-6115. Prince George's County Public Schools will also host three meetings in the community about the search for a new superintendent of schools. That will be overseen by our search firm, HYA. Parents, students, staff, and members of the community are encouraged to attend, hear the latest news about the search, and share your input on what you want to see in a new superintendent. We really want all stakeholders to be involved in the selection of our superintendent. We need to know what qualifications and personal strengths are important to you, so please stay involved. Three community meetings are certainly scheduled, are currently scheduled as follows. On Monday, October the 29th, from 6:30 to 8:30 in the Whitehall Elementary School Cafeteria. Thursday, November the 1st, 6:30 to 8:30 PM in the Oxon Hill Middle School Cafeteria. On Thursday, November the 8th, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Kettering Middle School Cafeteria. Before I yield to the superintendent's report, in light of the coming, in light of it coming to the attention of the Board of Education that Ms. Johnson moved out of her district, Ms. Rosalynn Johnson moved out of her district on about June 7th, 2012, we have taken the action of reviewing all minutes and actions that were taken from that time to our last board meeting. In doing so, we have determined that minutes must be amended where Ms. Johnson took action, and that action must be reconsidered by the Board of Education. To that end, I ask my colleagues for a motion to amend the meetings, meeting minutes as revived, revised under Item 3.8 to delete Ms. Johnson's votes for those meetings.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved and seconded, as, as indicated. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? That motion passed. Thank you. Colleagues, we must now reconsider the actions that were either moved by Ms. Johnson or seconded by Ms. Johnson. May I please have a motion to reconsider actions that were either moved or seconded by Ms. Johnson?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Thank you, Ms. Boston. It's been properly moved and seconded that the board reconsider actions either moved or seconded by Ms. Johnson during that period. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Motion pass. I also wanted to note that based on the date by which the board was notified.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The board also needs to now, that you've agreed to reconsider, now vote to approve the resolutions listed in Agenda Item 3.9 for the record.
Thank you. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to now approve those items that we just did for reconsideration under 3.9 for the record?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Waller.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. It's been properly moved and seconded that the board now approve those items, which deletes Ms. Johnson's either motion for an action or a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any objections? Any abstentions? The motion pass. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. It should also be noted that under the, under state law, the key timeframe is 180 days. Based on the date that the board now knows, Ms. Johnson apparently filed to move out of her residence was June 7th, which makes it 178 days prior to the end of her term, and therefore, the position would have remained vacant on that basis. Chair now yields to Superintendent Crowley for his report.
Thank you, Chair Jacobs. Good evening, everyone. I would like to open by thanking all of the fathers, the uncles, grandfathers, elected officials, community leaders, and other male models who took part in the countywide Men Make a Difference Day held on October 8th, 2012. More than 30 schools hosted opportunities for men to get involved in education, and we were overwhelmed by your enthusiasm and willingness to support our students. We know that by working together, we can help ensure a great future for our students. I would also like to thank the many students, parents, staff members, and community volunteers who helped spruce up our 60 school sites during the countywide annual Clean Up, Green Up event held last Saturday. Your efforts go a long way in building school pride and creating a pleasant environment for students and staff alike. Congratulations to our board chair, Regina Jacobs, who was recently elected as Secretary to the Executive Board of Directors for the Maryland Association of Boards of Education. This is indeed an honor and a wonderful opportunity to share ideas and success stories with school boards across the state. We know she will be an outstanding addition to the Navy Board, so congratulations. Congratulations to Christine Gilliard-Author, Gladys Noon Spellman Elementary School Physical Education Teacher for being named the Maryland Association of Health for Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance Elementary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. Thank you, Ms. Gilliard-Author, for your outstanding work and for representing Prince George's County Public Schools well. We'd also like to extend congratulations to Modibo Abu, Carmen Chapel, Tommy Day, and Aaron Squire Wilson from Eleanor Roosevelt High School, and Konitja Kuo Embono from Bowie High School, who were selected as semifinalists in the 2013 National Achievement Scholarship Program. These students will go on to compete for 800 achievement scholarships that are worth more than $2.5 million. Finalists will be awarded scholarships, I believe, next spring. On October 9th and 10th, three of our schools were selected by the National Association of Secondary School Principals to host principal shadowing opportunities for officials from our U.S. Department of Education. Principals Edgar Brottanga of Northwestern High School, Lynn Stewie of Beacon Heights Elementary School, and Ingrid Williams of Overlook Elementary took part in this event. On October 10th, I had the opportunity to participate in our second quarterly university convening. With the theme of designing the path for college and career readiness, the event provided us with a chance to meet with our university partners to discuss ways we can collaborate to improve instruction and expand opportunities, opportunities for growth for our administrators, teachers, and students. The university convening was a great success, and I'd like to thank all of those that were involved in the planning. Students from 21 of our elementary schools took part in the October 17th National Symphony Orchestra Education Program, which introduces classical music to young people. I had the unique opportunity to take part in this event by narrating composer Aaron Copland's "A Lincoln Portrait," which includes narrated excerpts of Abraham Lincoln's great documents, including the Gettysburg Address. And if you go to the PG website, you'll see a picture of me out front with the National Symphony Orchestra, and I have to tell you, it was an incredible experience in the Kennedy Center that day, along with our, our students. This month, we began the 2014 Budget Development Process. We will host budget public hearings on October 30th and November 7th, beginning at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom to provide an opportunity for the public to share their budget priorities for the 2013-2014 school year. Your input is critical in developing a budget that reflects the priorities and needs of the community. My proposed budget will be presented to the Board of Education in December, and so I know that we will be having a number of community forums that will provide our public with an opportunity to weigh in on the budget, and certainly will be putting that information out on our website. On October 16th, the school system hosted an information session about our Resident Teacher Program, which is an accelerated training program for recent college graduates and professionals. The resident teacher program is open to professionals who are interested in changing career paths and recent college graduates with degrees in fields other than education. For more information, please visit our website. In September, we talked to you about our bus driver recruitment, and we're back tonight to talk to you about our efforts to increase our nursing pool. And so, we are currently seeking registered nurses and licensed practical nurses to serve in our schools. Interested individuals can apply online through the PGCPS website. And finally, I'd like to share my congratulations to all of the high schools that participated in the marching band competition last week. And most of you, if not some of you, may know that I am a marching band fanatic, so I was there along with several of our board members cheering the bands on. And so, congratulations, they did a wonderful job, and it was great to see all of the parents and other fans out there cheering our bands on. So, Madam Chair, that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. We saw that you were also directing the bands as well. Chair yields to Mr. Armwood for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation for the service that Rosalynn Johnson has provided to this board and to the children of this county. Ms. Johnson is an outstanding individual, and I will miss her probing questions, her adherence to the detail, her insisting on accountability. I wish that she will continue to contact me, mentor me, whenever she has an opportunity. And I think, no matter the situation of her leaving suddenly, I wish to express, and I hope the board as a whole expresses, its deep admiration and appreciation for Ms. Johnson and the work she's done, the dedication she has done, because she has truly dedicated her life to the equity and performance of our students. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Armwood. Echo, Ms. Higgins?
I, I just want to do that, echo Mr. Armwood's. I think that many of us who have been involved in the educational system in all different capacities know about the quality of commitment that Ms. Johnson has had, and she will certainly be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Board now, Chair now yields, point of personal privilege to Ms. Carolyn Boston.
Good evening. Doswell E. Brooks Elementary School was slated to undergo major renovations, therefore staff and students had to be relocated to another facility prior to the opening of the 2012-2013 school year. Staff from the Area 1 Office, Doswell E. Brooks Elementary School facilities, and members of the community were instructional in facilitating the move from Doswell E. Brooks to his temporary home at Berkshire Elementary. This evening, I want to recognize those individuals that helped to ensure the first day of school was successful for both staff and students by having the building set up and ready to go for instructions. As you can see, I have quite a few certificates, but I can tell everybody's not here, so I'm going to read one of the certificates, and then we will call the individuals up. And you can please come forward, so we can do a, a photo shoot, and you can get your certificate. The certificate reads, "Certificate of Recognition Presented to..." This person's name, "An appreciation of your involvement and commitment in helping to facilitate the move of Doswell E. Brooks Elementary School, students and staff to ensure a successful first day of school, presented this 23rd day of October 2012, signed by Carolyn Boston and Dr. Alvin Crowley." So, we're going to begin, if there's assistance. Carolyn, you want to ask up there? First person, if you're here. Ms. Stoddard, can you please remain with us, please? Thank you. And Ms. Stoddard, for everybody who don't know, is the principal of Doswell E. Brooks. Wonderful job. Cassandra Lassiter, who's the area director. Antonio Bon, Bone. Jonathan Johnson. Christopher Tyree. Charles Selman. Are you the whole family? You're all related? Samantha Jackson. Reginald Jackson. Joseph Jackson. It's another family. Great job. Larry Greer. Warren Jones. Ronnie Ford. Louis Fleet. Catherine DeVille. George Edelman. Is he here? Clarence Cole. Tony Butler. Joseph Butler. Lot of families here. Gary Butler. Yeah. Clarissa Brown. David Proctor. That's it. Mr. Zuckerman, but Ms. Lassiter is going to take that. So, thank you for the great job that you did.
Thank you, Ms. Boston, and thanks again for staff. That was clearly, as we said, an all-hands-on-deck approach and effort to make sure things went smoothly for students and staff. At this time, we have our legislative agenda, and Mr. Lucci is not with us here tonight, but he is being honored this evening by the Metropolitan Washington YMCA as Volunteer of the Year. So, congratulations to Mr. Lucci for that honor, because that's a great honor to be Volunteer of the Year for the YMCA. If you've, if you've had to do work for them and volunteer for them, they make you work. So, kudos to Mr. Lucci. But we do have on the legislative agenda that we wanted to get resolved, the sequestration resolution. And this resolution is a request by the Maryland Association of Boards of Education and also the Council of Urban Boards of Education under NSBA, the National School Boards Association, that all local boards in the state do a statewide advocacy effort to... that all local boards in the state do a statewide advocacy effort to urge Congress and the Obama Administration to amend the Budget Control Act to avoid drastic cuts to education funding, and that would actually result from sequestration. Sequestration refers to the across-the-board cuts that are slated. It's approximately 8% in federal discretionary spending, which includes education. It's mandated to take effect in 2013 if Congress does not enact a plan to reduce the national debt by $1.2 trillion in the coming decade. This information has been provided by the Maryland Association of Boards of Education and CUBE, the Council of Urban Boards of Education, to all board presidents and chairs. At this time, I yield to Mr. Armwood for a motion regarding the sequestration resolution.
I move that we approve the sequestration resolution and send it to the appropriate members of Congress. And I'd like to also add that, as members of the community, please contact your congressmen, your senators, to ask them to do their job and not allow sequestration to occur. It is going to affect the school systems a great deal. We are already creating a strategy of who we're going to contact, but it takes more than just the Boards of Education to do that. It has to come from all the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armwood. Ms. Ahmed?
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved in second that the board approves the sequestration resolution as stated. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion pass. Colleagues, this evening, we have three registered speakers on an agenda item, the agenda item being the options for use of the Old Greenbelt Middle School. For those registered to speak, you must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. You may not release your time to a registered or unregistered speaker. At the sound of the buzzer, we ask that you complete the sentence that you are on. You may not relinquish any of your time as I indicated. We encourage you to use titles rather than names. Your adherence to these guidelines will make sure that public comment goes smoothly. Our first speaker is the Honorable Lita Mack, Councilmember, City of Greenbelt. Please come forward.
Thank you, members of the Board of Education. The City of Greenbelt is very interested in the preservation of the old, that is, the historic Greenbelt Middle School. The school was the original Greenbelt High School when the city was established 75 years ago. The city was an active partner in working for the construction of the new middle school. Two years ago, the city council established a task force to explore ideas and make recommendations on the possible reuse of the old school at the suggestion of school staff that we provide ideas for the school use. The task force met with school system representatives, held community forums, and gathered considerable information before submitting its recommendations, which were accepted by the council. In August, we sent a letter to then-Supervisor Lieutenant William Height indicating our interest in exploring the leasing of dedicated space, as well as the possibility of having shared space in the school. In the list of options that the interim superintendent has provided, the lease of dedicated space to the city is option three, and it is not recommended. This appears to limit the possibilities for city usage of the building. However, we would still like to explore the shared usage of part of the building, such as that set aside as swing space for emergencies. Such space would enable the city to provide needed community services, particularly to the residents of Franklin Park. Currently, the city offers such programs as tutoring, family counseling, youth basketball, after-school art classes, and reading clubs. Our Advisory Committee on Education works closely with the schools, and our annual awards ceremonies recognize educators and two students from each of our Greenbelt schools. Surveys of the neighborhood have indicated that there is a desire for additional sports activities, arts facilities, preschool programs, STEM programs, and social services. However, space to provide such programming is limited. We are very interested in exploring the possibility of having space to provide needed services to this community and its children. We would be happy to provide additional information and would like to stay in close communication throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Smith, an individual Greenbelt.
Members of the Board of Education and executives of Prince George's County Public Schools, I appear before you today to speak on the matter of the relocation of the North County French Immersion School from its current location at Robert Goddard to the unoccupied Greenbelt Middle School. I am the father of a Robert Goddard French Immersion 2011 graduate and a current seventh grader. My family has been closely associated with the school since 2001, the year it moved to its current location. As a longtime French Immersion parent, I feel at times the program is underappreciated. The school draws a diverse cadre of students. There is no test for entrance. Admission is by lottery only, and yet, the school is routinely among the best schools in the county, as measured by the MSA and other tests. Based on MSA data made public at mdreportcard.org, the state's page for distributing test data, I compiled and sorted the state's middle schools by a fraction of students performing advanced or proficient on eighth-grade MSA reading. The RGFI scored 94.8%, 32nd among 417 schools statewide outstanding. However, I feel the true measure of a school is not how well the students perform, but how well they perform compared to their peers of equal opportunity. One measure of opportunity is the fraction of students who qualify for free and reduced meals, farms. When one considers the 309 Maryland schools that have greater than 25% farm students, RGFI ranks fifth statewide. The South County French Immersion Program at John Hanson ranks sixth, the Robert Goddard Montessori Program, second. All the other programs near the top of the list are either subsidized charter programs or tag schools that select their students. The point here is that the French Immersion programs are not schools that teach French, but they are outstanding schools that also teach French. These are not good programs. They are the top primary education programs in the state of Maryland, a state that has the best public schools in the nation. And now, the issue before the board, the relocation of the North County French Immersion Program at Goddard to the currently unoccupied building at Greenbelt Middle. I am thoroughly in favor of this idea. The Goddard building is severely overcrowded, however, expansion of the French Immersion program is so compelling that moving the program without the opportunity to expand would be crippling, and the case for expansion is so utterly obvious to be almost inevitable. If not by this board, by the next. I urge the board to pursue option one, expansion with renovation, for two reasons. Renovation will only be more expensive when the building is occupied. And two, the Greenbelt Middle Building is in such disrepair that I'm skeptical that $200,000 renovation is sufficient. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Please leave your comments, so that the board may finish reading the rest of them.
Hi, I'm Molly Lester. I'm a Greenbelt resident, and I'm here tonight to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to speak and to support the recommendation being made that the school be used for the Robert Goddard Immersion School and for swing space. I have a strong belief that school facilities and resources should be used for education purposes and/or to provide direct support services to students and their families to help our young people succeed. City of Greenbelt recommendations accepted by the Greenbelt Middle School Task Force is to offer community services in a community center type of format. However, there are, just so that the board is aware, there are currently five public facilities offering those types of services within 1.25 miles of the Greenbelt, historic Greenbelt Middle School. There is a Greenbelt Community Center, a Greenbelt Youth Center, a Greenbelt Aquatic and Fitness Center, a City Recreation Building, and a County Recreation Building that offer those services. However, there are services that our young people need, as well as their families. The community that the Greenbelt Middle School is located is Franklin Park. At a community planning event that took place in Greenbelt in May, the raw data shows that the greatest overwhelming need was for childcare programs, in particular preschool programs. This is not an area of strength for the City of Greenbelt. City of Greenbelt does offer a lot of recreational opportunities. I would like to suggest that there are other types of support services that our students and our communities need, besides just straight recreation programs. If the school board were to consider non-school uses for this building, which I hope they don't, given overwhelming public comments at the public hearings and the community event for a school to be there, whether it be Turning Point Academy, or more recently, the Immersion School, that the school board can expand options under consideration and encourage looking at partnerships with nonprofits. The school does a great job with nonprofits. At Bladensburg High School, there's the End Harvest Ministries. They do a super program. There's programs that the school works with, not directly. There's Joe's Movement Emporium in Mount Rainier, which offers all types of programs for young people, after-school programs, as well as providing education and workforce development opportunities for our young teenagers. So I would strongly encourage, first and foremost, to keep the school a school. And again, we are so fortunate to have a program like the Robert Goddard Immersion School in our area, and would like to give them the opportunity to have a strong base. And then, if not, look strongly to encourage those types of programs that will provide services. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lester. With that said, thank you very much for public comment on this agenda item. I yield to Dr. Crowley for presentation of this item.
Okay, thank you. Item 6.01 is before the board, to look at the use of Old Greenbelt Middle School. The presentation will include options for the use of the Old Greenbelt Middle School. The facility has a state-rated capacity of 1,092 students and has roughly 141,125 square feet of instruction and administrative space. Tonight, we'd like to present to you five options for the board's consideration in determining the future use of the facility. Option one is to move Robert Goddard French Immersion to this site and expand the program. Option two, move Robert Goddard French Immersion to the site without expansion. Option three, lease a portion of the space to the City of Greenbelt. Option four, swing space for the northern part of the county in case of emergencies, recognizing that there is a tremendous need for swing space in that section of our county. And then, option five, a combination of the four options listed. I'd like to turn the presentation over to Ms. Golson, who's our chief operating officer, and she will provide us with a brief presentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Education. Today, we'll be presenting information concerning potential uses of Greenbelt Middle School, the Old Greenbelt Middle School facility. Even though we're still working through some of the financial components of the project, we wanted to begin this process today to get input from the Board of Education and to share the recommendation of the superintendent and staff. At the conclusion of today's presentation, we'll be able to answer how we would like to utilize the Old Greenbelt Middle School facility. On May 30, 2012, the Capital Improvement Program Office contacted seven architectural engineering companies and asked that they submit proposals for architectural engineering services. And those seven companies are listed on the slide in front of you. They were asked to provide proposals as related to construction and creation of a K-8 program to be in the Old Greenbelt Middle School facility. Four of the seven architectural companies submitted proposals based on the eight components listed on the slide here. They are renovations, they encompass renovations, ADA compliance recommendations, renovation and revision to the current parking lot, installation of playground equipment. Out of those four proposals submitted, the financial range of those four proposals went from $6 million to $24 million. We believe that the scope of work was not clearly defined, and therefore, that would attribute to the large range of proposals that we received from the four companies out of the seven. In June of 2012, Johnson, Merriman, and Thompson Architectural Firm was hired to provide a recommendation to Prince George's County Public Schools as the company or proposal that they felt would be the best fit for Prince George's County Public Schools, and that company was Lurk Meyer Partnerships. And the amount of that proposal totaled approximately $8.5 million. As Dr. Crowley stated earlier, we are presenting five options. The first one is to move Robert Goddard French Immersion to the Old Greenbelt Middle School site and expand the program. In order to do that, that will cost the actual cost of the renovations, which is approximately $8.5 million, plus additional FTEs each year until the year of 2021. That would be the completion of the phase-in process. The second option would be to move Robert Goddard French Immersion to the Old Greenbelt Middle School site, but without expansion of the program. Students who would, students and staff would use approximately 49,000 square feet for instructional use, which does not include the use of the gymnasium and administration area. The cost of moving the students from their current site to the Old Greenbelt facility will cost approximately $200,000, plus nine additional FTEs. And those FTEs will be for custodial and food service staff. The $200,000 will be used to renovate restrooms, to accommodate our elementary, our primary students, and to provide playground equipment at the site for a K-8 program. Option three would be to lease the space to the City of Greenbelt. As stated earlier, a letter was presented to the former superintendent requesting the use of 36,000 square feet of space, the old administrative wing, and the gymnasium. At a cost of approximately $4 per square footage, which we currently charge our charter schools, that will be a minimum of $144,000 in annual revenue. That does not include the use of admin, the use of the administration wing, and the gymnasium in the calculations. The fourth option would be swing space for the northern part of the county in case of emergencies. The $70,000 listed on the slide is to maintain the vacant facility if we were not, if we decided not to move any students into the building, but to make sure that we maintain the site and make sure that boiler and AC were working, and that we made sure that the building was not vandalized. And option five would be a combination of the four options listed above. As stated earlier, the recommendation of the superintendent and staff would be for a combination, which would be five, which would be option number two, move our students from their existing location to the Old Greenbelt Middle School, our Robert Goddard French Immersion students, without expansion at this time, and use the additional space in the building for swing space for the northern part of the county in case of emergencies. Our rationale is that, at this time, funds have not been identified to cover the expense of a full program expansion, and there's also a need for space in the northern part of the county if an emergency arises. Are there any questions?
Let me guess.
I'm sure.
Thank you so much, Ms. Golson and Dr. Crowley, for the presentation. This gives the board a lot of information to go from, although there's still a lot more information we will need, obviously. I have Mr. Burles, Ms. Beck, and Mr. Armwood, in that order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Ms. Golson, for the presentation. Dr. RBS, you will probably be more familiar with, you know, the project I'm about to reference, and that's the John Hanson French Immersion and Montessori Program. We moved one of the schools to Shugart, and it's my understanding that, you know, we didn't expand or add additional FTEs because we didn't have the financial resources to do so. Is that correct? do so. Is that correct?
Correct.
Absolutely. So I guess just for the administration, if we're going to expand a program that's going to cost, you know, $8 million and adding additional FTEs until 2021.
Correct.
I would just, if you're thinking about that, for me, as a South County representative, in order to ensure equity and fairness across our school district, you must consider expanding the southern location as well.
I do want to make a clarifying point, that the $8 million that's listed on the slide is only for the renovations.
Okay.
That is not the cost of the additional FTEs until the year 2021.
Okay.
It will be actually more than what's listed.
More than what's listed. Yep, understood. And I just wanted to say that. But I do agree with some of the earlier speakers. We have this facility, you know, I didn't even think about Tall Oaks when the speakers mentioned Tall Oaks, or, you know, making it a school. I mean, I definitely support moving, you know, initially, this is my initial reaction, moving Robert Goddard French Immersion there, in the hope that, you know, once additional dollars come available, we'll be able to expand the program. But I just can't see myself supporting, expanding a program in the north when this has already occurred in the south, and we were told there's no additional financial resources to make it happen. Thank you.
Ms. Burrows, did I hear you say to move the students out of Tall Oaks as an option? I'm just curious if I heard this.
No, one of the speakers, you know, mentioned it, and I just mentioned, I just said that I hadn't thought about that. I hadn't even considered that.
Okay.
So I was just reflecting on her comments.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
I share Board Member Burrows' comments. A lot of the students who are now in Shugart at the Shugart John Hansen, which is clearly something that also needs to be addressed, that name. When we moved them, there was no expansion, and so I would say that any expansion in French Immersion must be a dual north and south expansion program, especially because at Shugart, they do have the seats that they could now expand because Shugart was a middle school. I'm somewhat confused about what the 8.5 million is under number one. That's the capital renovation?
Yes, correct. That's the actual amount from the proposal submitted from Luke Meyer Architectural Firm.
So number two, moving would be moving them into the Old Greenbelt without any capital renovation?
There would be minor renovations, but it would not be as extensive as Luke Meyer recommended.
Okay, so that would be something that I would like to see follow-up on. In fact, it might be helpful for us to either see the schematics or either go to the school, because I went to the school a couple of times when we were justifying its need to be torn down. And really, that school was in such bad shape when we went to the state that I thought the state agreed it should be torn down. So I don't know how you could move Goddard French Immersion into it without some sort of significant repair to the facility.
I like the recommendation of us taking a trip there.
Yes. I am on board with number two, as long as the equity piece is also part of any funding recommendation aligned with this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Armwood?
Thank you. I find myself in agreement with my colleagues that I would love to see the French Immersion program expanded for both the south and north part of the county. I have children who've gone through the French Immersion program, grandchildren in there now, and it's a great program. My question is, when you, this figure for expansion, how many seats were you considering expanding under this program to arrive at this figure? And under the present configuration, are there any additional seats available at Robert Goddard, and for that matter, Shugart?
With the expansion going to year 2021, it would take us to 1,050 seats in the French Immersion program.
You said Robert Goddard.
Correct. If we were to move Robert Goddard to Greenbelt Middle School.
Okay.
And your second question again, please?
Well, I guess my real question is, are there any less expensive alternatives to expanding in steps John Hansen and Robert Goddard?
The problem with expansion, expanding by steps, eventually, those students are going to move up, and we would have to maintain those FTEs with an expansion. So we still would have to incur the financial cost of the staff, and that would be an ongoing expenditure. So once we make that decision to expand, it would be an ongoing cost that we would have to incur.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Foster?
I too kind of agree with my colleagues on this. If, you know, if you're going to do it in the north, then you definitely need to look at, you know, the south end as well for an expansion. But I do like the recommendation for not expanding the program. I'm just a little confused why we would need nine additional FTEs to do that.
We would need cafeteria workers, I want to say approximately five cafeteria workers and four custodial staff members.
But if you're not, if you're not expanding the program, then why would we need the additional cafeteria workers that were sufficient to handle it while?
The, the action, thank you. The actual food service staff and custodial workers that exist now at Robert Goddard would stay there, since we still would have the Robert Goddard Montessori Program staying. So the reason for the additional FTEs is that we will be separating that population, moving the French Immersion to the new site, and we would have to have the FTEs because that staff would stay.
So how many students are we talking about moving out of there that's presently in the French Immersion program?
Five, approximately 582.
And I would leave how many at the present Goddard, if you move 582 out?
I'd have to check that, but I can do that. Can you pull up enrollment? Dr. Arbogast is going to pull up enrollment now.
Okay. I also like, maybe if we have space left in the Greenbelt Middle School, then why can't we look into the possibility of leasing some of that space to the city of Greenbelt? Because since we, we all agree that repairs will need to be done to Greenbelt to even move that program in there. Having that space, some of that space, if we're not utilizing the whole space, could help offset some of the costs that maybe occur from a result of having to renovate that. I mean, why wasn't that part of your recommendation?
Our recommendation was based on the fact that we've had an increase of CIP projects in the northern part of the county, and we needed that facility. When we had a situation that took place at the beginning of the school year, the example would be Laurel Elementary School. And had we not had the Greenbelt Middle School site to use as swing space, we would have been placed in a precarious situation where we would not have been able to find a location to house those students until we were able to complete that project.
Okay. Ms. Higgins?
Yes, thank you. Could you tell us what the net square footage is for that building?
Yes, the total square footage for the building is 141,125 square feet.
Okay.
The instructional space in the building is 98,786 square feet.
Okay. And if we were to move the French Immersion without expansion, what would be the square footage that they would use?
Approximately 49,815 square feet, and that doesn't include the use of the gymnasium and administrative area.
So that would be above additional square footage?
Correct.
So there would be a remaining about 48,000 net square feet available?
Yes, ma'am.
Net?
Yes.
Net, okay. I support the superintendent's recommendation in regards to French Immersion. I think that makes absolute sense. I also agree with my colleagues in terms of if there's an expansion in the north and if there is space for expansion in the south and it fits with our budget, you know, that we obviously look to do that, because the French Immersion program has such value to our children. I am recalling that the first concept in allowing swing space was Ms. Johnson's. And Ms. Johnson, after seeing the trouble that we had with Laurel Elementary not being ready, and if we hadn't had that space, we really would have been in a bigger jam than we were. So I support the swing space as well. But if we've got 48,700 square feet for swing space, we all, many of us, went to Cube, and we talked in Cube about the value and the importance of community. And here we have a municipality, a community, willing to provide additional services that are going to help the education of our children. They're going to help it in a, they're reaching out to a community that is the largest apartment complex on the east coast, if not the nation. The test scores that those children come from are Spring Hill Lake. They're low, very low and moderate income children. And we have a, and when, one of the speakers, who I appreciate her comments identifying the community resources that can come together, but when you look at, if you're familiar with that area, the Spring Hill Lake area, which is now called Franklin Park Apartments, they're separated from the 1.8 miles away by, how many mile, how many lanes is the Beltway now? So they're separated by the Beltway and by Kennelworth Avenue, which is another large industry. So that community has not been able to be served in the way that it could be with this proposal. So I would ask people to consider the possibility of allowing the city of Greenbelt, you know, maybe two or three classrooms, to allow some for storage, as well as to have some ability to operate during the day, to try and reach the parents and the seniors in that low-income community, and then make the availability after hours for the use that the school needs, et cetera. And if we were to, say, do 3,000, 4,000 square feet, that would still leave us 45,000 square feet for the swing space. So I just would propose that and put that on the table. The other thing I wanted to ask about was, frankly, from my understanding of boilers, which I know how to spell the word, I'm not sure exactly what it all does, except that it's expensive, there's no way we're going to be able to put any school in there without anybody in there, without really addressing some of the struck, not structural, but the mechanical, all of that stuff. There's, there, so I know you're still looking at the budget in terms of what that capital project has monies left over to do, but to think we're going to be able to put French Immersion in there for $200,000, which is just the move, and not look at many of the items that need to be repaired, I think would be unrealistic.
Thank you for that information. We are knowledgeable that we're going to have to go back and reprioritize our CIP projects and add, if the board votes to move Robert Goddard back to the Old Greenbelt Middle School facility, onto our Capital Improvement Program list of schools where we would need to make some additional renovations in terms of boiler.
Well, I guess my understanding is, is that there's money in that capital project that would allow for the renovation of Old Greenbelt.
So I would actually have to work with our CIP office to determine the excess funds from the new Greenbelt Middle School facility.
Right.
Once all those bills have been paid, to determine from the excess funds, how much of that are federal funds, state and county funds, and then what's left over is a portion of county funds.
Yes.
If we do have enough to pay that, for that boiler or additional equipment, that information will be presented back to the board to make a final determination.
Okay. I know we are not, we're moving the, I'm sorry, if I could just finish. We're moving, we are not renovating and adding to that bus lot, which I think was budgeted about $8 million to move the bus lot and to do the demolition and renovation to do that. We're now moving that bus lot, so that money, maybe not all of it, but there are monies available in that project from, unless they've disappeared, which I'm hoping they haven't. Anyway, I know you're looking into it.
I'm looking at Mr. Sharon, because we will definitely go back and investigate.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. What is our, if you could give me the average, what's the current, from year-to-year, average waitlist for the French Immersion program?
I was just looking at, two years ago, it was 183 students, but I didn't have a breakdown as to whether they were from the south or the north, but there were 183 kids.
Okay. And so if I understand it correctly, the funds that we're talking about to do any of these options are based on funds that have already been designated for the Greenbelt project?
Actually, they will be funds we would take from our general fund.
Okay. So if that being the case, and what I hear from my colleagues around the two different programs, one at Shugart and one at Robert, at Robert Goddard, then theoretically, the administration could come back with a proposal that splits funds that says, in addition here, in addition there, if the board so desired to do that, in terms of an expansion of both.
If we could find the money.
Okay. And so it's not based on just funds that are designated through this Greenbelt project?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And then, did I hear you say that you came about the $4 per square foot based on, so two questions around Greenbelt, is 36,000 square feet the amount that the city requested?
Yes, in a letter presented to the former superintendent.
Right. And then the $4 per square foot, that was based on our charter school?
Yes, that's the amount that we charge our current charter schools.
Okay. So was there any discussion, or is it based on what, are you waiting for the board meeting to present options to the city of Greenbelt as to what they could use in terms of less than 36,000 square feet?
We did not look at that option, because we weren't aware that that would be one of the recommendations of staff here.
Okay.
We could definitely go back and look at that.
Okay. I just didn't know if they had also had a discussion about that, if that was, if that was, if the board went in another direction, that they could still have space. I, and this is probably way too optimistic, but I was looking at, if, so I think that if we look at expanding both programs, that clearly that's going to cost more money. But I think that also goes to what we're about, student achievement and academic, so that's, I think that's critical. I think that's a very important factor to look at, and I know we would have to find the money for that, but I do think that should be top on the list, in my opinion. The other thing is, on the swing space, I also agree that that's, that's really critical. So with 141,000 square feet, you said, trying to visualize that, that building, having been over there, it's not a lot you could do. I mean, you have, you can't do, I don't think we could do more than two options. It would have to be, you know, one or two, I don't think we can add a third option into that, that mix. We'd have to really prioritize. So what I'd like to see, I would like to see a breakdown of what Dr. Arbogast just told us in terms of the waiting list that we see on a regular basis for both programs, in terms of the, the expansion, yes or no? And then also, the, I do think we should look at the kinds of services that the community can provide. So I don't, so that's why I asked about the 36,000 square feet. I think community partnerships are great to have in our school district, and I think it goes to our, you know, saying that everyone in the community is responsible for our success, and we need them to do that. So I would be in a better position if I could see, one, the, a trend of our waitlist and how that could be eliminated, because I'm thinking that you could expand less, you know, less than what you have here of the up to 2021. Okay, so if I could see that for both programs, and I know all of our specialty programs have waitlists, so if there's a trend that you think, you see, if you can let us, let us know that. And then I have Ms. Waller, and then Ms. Eubanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With this discussion, I also agree that we need to consider the equity between our northern and southern programs, and, I mean, it's just a lot to be considered. If the city of Greenbelt were to take over a portion of this building, would they provide repairs, or would that be up to us?
That would be a communication we would have to have with the city of Greenbelt, and then a creation of an MOU to cover that component if so decided amongst the two parties.
And I also feel very strongly that in light of some of the CIP projects in the northern area of the county, and with the new proposed Haysville Elementary School, not knowing the status of it, that's going to be ready, we could be affected, and I think that we were going to, we may need swing space. And I think that we, we're going to, we may need swing space, and if we have any other acts of mother nature that could cause us to need some extra space, because right now, our schools are fueled to capacity. We don't, we don't have any space. And I think that's something that we need to keep in mind, is some swing space for various programs. Thank you.
Can I just, so I wanted to say, in turn, you know, I think the swing space is very important, but I think we can be very strategic about negotiating options. And I'm just saying that, for example, I don't, certainly don't want to speak for them, because I haven't spoken to them, but if we need swing space, which we know we do, and if we went with an option that did allow a city to come in and be a partner with us, then I think part of that agreement is, when we need the space, we're using the space. And I actually think they would probably partner with us on it. I could be wrong. I'm not going to speak for them. I mean, that might be some issues that I'm not aware of, but I'm just saying that I think that, I'm just saying we shouldn't throw it out of, out of, out of the park, because I think that when you need that space, we have first dibs on it. That's all.
It could be flexible for space. And I just want to note, because we just awarded staff this mor, this, this evening for Dawswell Brooks, but though, that staff is there for the remainder of this school year, so.
Yes.
We would just have to be cognizant of that.
Oh, of course. Absolutely.
The timeframe.
That's why I said we get first dibs.
Okay.
School purpose. All right. Ms. Eubanks?
I just had to chime in as well. I agree with every, with what everyone has said. There is space here, and we need to make sure that we use every bit and be the most advantageous we can with the space. We definitely can do two things, but if we work hard and get everything together, we may be able to do three things. And I love what Ms. Jacob said in, in the way of showing us where we are now when it comes to, when it comes to the waiting list. And definitely, if we're going to do it for the north, we have to do it for the south. That's all I have to say, because everybody has already asked all the questions.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. I also have, who was back in, Mr. Burrows, Mr. Armwood, and Ms. Beck.
I'm going to be extremely quick. Dr. Crowley, Ms. Gulson, you said you would consider proposing an expansion in the southern part of the county and in the northern part of the county, if monies were available?
That is correct.
And so I would just say, when I look at these options, or when you come back to us with the options, if you can just see if you can identify money, just so that we're not debating and discussing issues and ideas that we already know we don't have the funding for.
We could certainly do that, but I would also say to you, in weighing options, we would have to look at the impact of that decision as well, so that if we're going to make a decision to expand both programs, certainly something would be impacted by that decision. So that would be part of the discussion as well.
Definitely.
Mr. Armwood?
Thank you. I have not heard any discussion of what's going to happen to the considerable space left at Robert Goddard, and what is the plan for that space?
At this time, we will continue to use the facility as it is. We are not planning to expand John Hansen French immersion at this time.
I'm talking about Robert Goddard Montessori?
The additional space. Actually, we are using that facility to its capacity, so we would very much, just like we did with John Hansen Montessori, they'd be able to utilize the entire facility and not have to share some of the space that they are currently sharing at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Which would probably mean they will come to the board meeting and say, expand our program, too. Just a thought. Ms. Beck?
I need more information on the timing and impact of this type of a discussion and decision. We just submitted our CIP to the state, and when I hear reprioritization of CIP, it makes me nervous, because that means everybody gets thrown back into a CIP discussion.
Thank you for that question. It actually would not affect the thirteen, fourteen school year. It would have to be for the fourteen, fifteen school year, because that CIP list has already been approved by the Board of Education and cannot be made, and there cannot be changes, there cannot be any changes made to that.
Okay.
Current list.
So what is the timing on this decision?
Once the board decided, the move would take place for the next school year.
Okay. I want to go back to the existing condition of the building. When I toured it, we were told that in the historic section, that first main section, the plumbing was so bad that they couldn't even repair the plumbing, because that type of piping didn't even exist anymore. And, and so, this is not just a paint and carpet discussion. Moving children into that building has more than a two-hundred-thousand-dollar cost. The other issue is nine additional FTEs for custodial and food service staff, but expansion, without expansion, but when we talk expansion, we're also talking expanded transportation costs. And so, these children are not going to their locals. They're going to a, they're a more expensive program, because they're transported. So we're not just talking FTEs, we're talking transportation.
I actually don't think that's going to be a significant change, because the Greenbelt Middle is actually in a fabulous location, as far, I actually think we might actually save. So if you think about it, the buses are coming from all parts of that part of the county.
Right.
So adding a few more kids to those already existing routes to a school that's right, that's, like in the heart of all the roads crossing, I actually think we might save some money on it.
Oh, okay. Because you always, and I'm going to say, I just assume that once I take a child out of their local and then put them into a specialty program, you're adding a transportation cost, but that's really such an urban.
Yeah, think about the network. Yeah, think of the network that already exists. So adding more kids to the existing network should not really increase cost. And moving it to a central location, like Greenbelt Middle, might actually reduce cost.
Right.
Think about our Laurel kids.
Would you say the same about Shoe Guard? Or is Shoe Guard's location different?
Shoe Guard's not as central.
Yeah.
No, not the same.
I, I just wanted to put my two cents in, that I, I agree with the movement of the Goddard French immersion with, without expansion, and the swing space option. So those are my two favorites on.
Ms. Beck, in response to your first question, you go in the building, in terms of the old section, it does require a considerable amount of work, in terms of the condition of the building. But if you think of the building sort of as an H, where there's the, the old corridor for the admin, when you walk into the building, would require some conditional, some work.
Right.
But if you go over to the other side, you see that the building is in much better shape, in terms of the classrooms, and the physical classroom space. So as we think about a transition, we certainly would be looking at the section of the building that is in much better condition.
Does that section have a gym?
The gym is sort of in between, so when you walk in, there's the admin area, and then you go back, and then there's the gymnasium, which then leads to the back corridor.
Okay, so if we went into the back, they could use that gym? Okay, that's.
Yes.
That was my question. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a lot to consider. I guess, for the board's purpose, we will need to have discussions around agenda setting, as to when and how to bring it back. And I would say that that would be based on getting information that we've requested tonight, to help us be more informed, obviously. And, and we acknowledge and know that one of the most expensive pieces around what we do is expansion of programs. But again, if you would come back with the information, and you can give us your timeframe as to when you think that, that would be available. Thank you. All right, that brings us, on the colleagues, to, excuse me, oh, and also with, from the community's perspective and our speakers, if you would make sure that you, if you're not already signed up, make sure that you're getting updates from the board on the agenda as to when this item will come back up, so that you're back here, helping us make an informed decision. Thank you.
Ms. Jacob, I think there was a question about how many students are at Robert Goddard Montessori? Five hundred and fifty-five. I think that was a question, Ms. Foster.
Five fifty-five.
No, they were. How many would remain if we moved those five hundred and some to Greenbelt?
All of them. Because, yeah, so the, so actually, Robert Goddard Montessori and Robert Goddard French immersion have more students than the building capacity, by each school by about a hundred. So those, those five hundred and fifty-five would actually fit more comfortably in the existing building.
So you move them both?
Mm-mm.
Just one?
Move one.
So how many will remain at the old building?
The five fifty-five, the Montessori students would remain.
Okay.
And the five ninety.
I got you, ma'am.
From French immersion would move.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Dr. Crowley, that brings us to item seven point O, which is a consent agenda.
Thank you. Item seven point O one to seven point O five includes proclamations honoring the following events in Prince George's County Public Schools, honoring Red Ribbon Week, October twenty-third through the thirty-first, honoring National Native American History Month in Prince George's County Public Schools during the month of November, honoring American Education Week, November eleventh through the seventeenth, honoring National Disability Employment Awareness Month, which is during the month of October, and honoring National School Bus Safety Week, October twenty-second to the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Colleagues, may I please have a motion to approve items seven point one through five?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve consent items seven point one through seven point five.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. Sir, thank you, Mr. Burrows, who's properly moved in second at the board, approve consent agenda items seven point one through seven point five. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion pass. Dr. Crowley?
Okay. Item seven point O six to seven point one-one are before the board for approval of an easement of right-of-way for Waterman Meter Vault, and appurtenances in connection with the schools listed below, which would include Potomac Landing Elementary School, Concord Elementary School, John Howard Office Facility, Kenmore Middle School, and Gardner Shoe Guard Middle School.
Thank you. And I believe also Edgar Allan Poe, is that correct?
Edgar Allan Poe.
So noted.
Sorry.
No problem. Colleagues, entertain a motion, please.
So move.
Ms. Foster?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. It's been properly moved in second at the board approves items seven point six through seven point one-one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion pass. Dr. Crowley?
Item seven point one-two, Crossland High School Auditorium Construction. This item is before the board for approval in response to a request from the Prince George's County Department of Public Works and Transportation for dedication of property adjacent to Temple Hills Road for improvements associated with the construction of Crossland High School Auditorium.
So move. Except, are you asking approval for seven point twelve and thirteen?
Seven point twelve, and we can include seven point thirteen as well.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley.
Which would be Clinton Grove Elementary School major renovation.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Thank you, Mr. Burrows, who's properly moved in second to approve items seven point one-two and thirteen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion pass. Yield to Dr. Crowley.
Item eight point one, under budget consent agenda. This item is before the board for approval for fiscal year 2013 appropriation reassignments over one hundred thousand, within a major category for period September thirteenth, two thousand twelve, through September twenty-sixth, two thousand twelve.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Colleagues, entertain a motion for item, were you just explaining that one, Dr. Crowley? Do you want to do all three?
We can do all, I can include all of them.
Absolutely. Go ahead and explain which other.
Eight point O two expenditure requirement, and then we have a capital lease requirement under eight point O three.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Colleagues, a motion for eight point one, two, and three?
Second, so move.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved in second at the board approve items eight point one through eight point three. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion pass. Colleagues, we do have one speaker registered for ten point O. Are we there?
Hmm.
Okay, yield to Dr. Crowley. Are we there?
Yes.
Ten point O, okay. We do have one registered speaker under ten point O, which is Governor's Unfinished Business, the two thousand and twelve Bridge to Excellence Master Plan, Mr. David Kahn. Sir, as you come forward, must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. The board will not address your comments, except to the extent to clarify any issues. At the sound of the buzzer, please complete the sentence that you are on only. Your adherence to these guidelines will ensure that public comment is smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. I originally signed up to speak on this topic a couple of weeks ago, but the board session was canceled for a apparent lack of quorum. So I went back up on the site, on board docs, to make sure it was still on the agenda for tonight, and it was, but pretty much nothing was there. And the executive summary that I had read two weeks ago was not there. Now, I knew enough to look back, and fortunately, on the previous agenda, that was still up on board docs, although it didn't have to be, because that meeting never was held. So I was able to download it. But first off, I'd like to recommend that if something is coming up at a meeting, that board docs have what we need to see. But even then, it didn't, because the board is not voting on the executive summary. The board is voting to approve the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan update, which is now not available to the public, at least not on board docs. Not that I had any intentions of reading the several hundred pages that must have been there, but I would have liked it for backup, because there were things in the summary, the executive summary, that I would have liked to have gone back into the depths of this and looked at, but I didn't have that opportunity. So in the name of transparency, I'd like to ask the administration to please post the documents that the board has to consider for the public to look at also. I noticed one thing in the executive summary that really troubled me, which is why I wanted these things. The first twenty pages or so, there were a number of items where the administration listed our successes over the last year or several years, the challenges we face in the future, and then year three plan of action. That's terrific, and I liked some of the stuff that I saw. When I got to about page twenty-one or so, about halfway through, everything else after that had only the successes and the challenges. Does this mean we don't have a year three plan of action? Probably not, but you couldn't tell it from the summary. And I have no idea what you're up to for things like core content areas, reading, math, science, HSAs, education that is multicultural, whatever that means, English language learners, career and technical education, early learning, gifted and talented education, and special ed, all have no year three plan that's presented, at least where I can find it. There was some good stuff to reduce achievement gaps, and the, what you're planning to do is kind of worked in there, but it's not set out clearly as to what the plans are for year three. Okay, I'll stop there. I have one or two more things, but I'll address them with Dr. Crowley separately. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
On item ten point O, which is Governor's Unfinished Business, the two thousand and twelve Bridge to Excellence Master Plan update. Colleagues, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved in second at the board approve this item, ten point O. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Motion pass. Yield to Dr. Crowley.
Item eleven point O one, Oxon Hill School Replacement, Change Order to Add Artificial Turf, and this is the item that was discussed previously by our board chair. Item eleven point O one is before the board as old business, requesting a change order to add artificial turf to the scope of contract for Oxon Hill High School replacement. The MN CPP has provided six hundred thousand dollars toward the artificial turf field for Oxon Hill High School, recognizing that the community will have access and use of the field. Prince George's County Public Schools will provide the balance for this change order in the amount of three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Ms. Harrison, just for the sake of process, should we entertain a new motion, or confirm the, confirm actions taken in executive session on that issue?
This was already previously approved by the board as an emergency item, but since you have it listed, I would just, again, vote.
you have it listed, I would just, again, vote on it for the, for the record, because there was a time issue, as I recall, with the contractor to get approval.
So noted, and otherwise, it would have been a, on the public agenda item as it originally was placed. Colleagues, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve item 11.0 for the Oxon Hill High School Replacement Change Order to add an artificial turf, artificial turf to the scope of the contract. Any discussion? Ms. Beck?
I would like to explain why I did not support this. I believe that artificial turf is, has some pros and some cons to it, and, and I would have preferred that the board have a discussion about the policy or the precedence that we were stepping into with regards to bringing our first artificial turf field to the, to one of our high schools. And I would have wanted to reserve whether we were doing artificial turf before we discuss that we have a contract, that we have a shared contract with Park and Planning on, on the presumption that we were moving forward with an artificial turf. So, clearly, the discussion to have $600,000 donated to us by Park and Planning prior to having a discussion about, do we even want artificial turf, worried me. Additionally, the expenses relating to the upkeep of artificial turf. I don't know if Park and Planning is sharing those expenses with us as well. Do we have an MOU with Park and Planning, so that they can use one-third of the cost of this artificial turf? So, I did not support it on those grounds. Thank you.
Mr. Burrows?
I just want to sincerely thank my colleagues for supporting this. As you know, for the longest time, the southern part of the county has suffered when it comes to our CRP dollars, and the board was extremely clear that that trend must end, and you've taken actions in accordance with that, with that value of ensuring equity across our school district. This will be the first artificial turf in Prince George's County, and I hope it's not the last, under the school system's control and management. When I go to neighboring jurisdictions, they have top-flight facilities, and our students deserve the same. So, I want to thank my colleagues for their votes, and I look forward to see more of these proposals come up, because it's important that all of our students have the ability to compete and play with the same facilities as everyone else. And with that, I'd like to call the question.
Ms. Jackson, call the roll, please. On the motion, Mr. Armwood?
Aye.
Ms. Beck?
No.
Ms. Boston?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Ms. Waller?
Aye.
Ms. Higgins?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion pass. Thank you. Yield to Dr. Crowley.
Under new business, items 12.01 to 12.03 are before the board as first readers, and no discussion is required.
Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Colleagues, entertain a motion for first readers. Move approval. Thank you, Ms. Beck.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Waller. It's been properly moved and seconded that the board approved items 12.1 through 12.3 as first readers. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? Seeing none. Dr. Crowley?
Okay, I have a different item. Apologize. So, we have item 13.1, Ratification of Prince George's County Educators Association Contract.
What a big deal. That's just awesome. So, we have, as an emergency item this evening, the ratification of Prince George's County Educators Association Contract that was ratified by its membership. We are delighted, as always, to work with our teachers' union, and we are delighted, as always, to have this opportunity, and we know it has been a difficult last several years. But we are delighted to have the opportunity to remind our teachers that we care about them, that we honor them, that we respect the work that they do every single day for our kids, and that they're doing a fabulous job in doing that. And I also want to recognize Mr. Lou Robinson, who is here on behalf of PGCEA. And we were very diligent in our efforts to say, if, obviously, you have the floor, if you did have anything that you wanted to present tonight to the board with regard to this, before we vote.
I would just like to thank you, Stan, for their work, because no one party can do it alone.
Awesome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Robinson. You're correct. It does take a joint effort, and we really appreciate the partnership that you've had with the administration over the last several years. With that being the case, do I vote, I need a motion to treat it as an emergency? Or did we do that in the agenda? Okay, we'll just do it for process, obviously, to make sure. Colleagues, I will entertain a motion to treat this item as an emergency item. So moved. Thank you, Ms. Boston.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. It's been properly moved and seconded that we treat this item as an emergency item, which is the ratification of the Prince George's County Educators Association Contract. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any objections or abstentions? Seeing none, the motion pass. Entertained a motion to approve the ratification of the Prince George's County Educators Contract, which is for, for FY 2013, 14? Is that correct? Wanted to make sure. Okay.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Armwood. Thank you, Ms. Beck. It's been properly moved and seconded that the board approved this item. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? The motion pass, and I would say that we will have our traditional signing ceremony, Mr. Robinson, on a date that we can mutually agree to do so. Congratulations to our teachers' union. Awesome. Yield to Dr. Crowley.
We have pumped now, public comment on non-agenda items.
That's correct. Thank you so much. We have three registered speakers for non-agenda items. For those who are registered to speak, you have three minutes to speak in public comment form. The board will listen to your comments. You must speak on the topic for which you have been registered. You may not relinquish any of your time to a registered or unregistered speaker. We ask that you use titles rather than names. Please leave a copy of your statement in the file next to Mr. Brian Coleman, if you have one. Our first speaker is Lauren Mathis. Please come forward. Next is Kyle Bigelow Thomas, Transportation. Shay Fels, Food and Nutrition. Ms. Fels?
Hello, good evening. My name is Shay Fels, and I'm the parent of Keonte Sumner out in the hallway. I'm here to speak on an issue of food and nutrition. My son currently has a documented severe food allergy to cow's milk, and up until this summer, he was receiving soy milk at his school. At the beginning of the school year, I was notified by my son's teacher that the cafeteria no longer provides a milk substitute. In lieu of the milk, he receives water on Mondays and Fridays, and juice on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And my question was to them, how is juice and water a substitute for milk for a three-year-old? Listed below is my chronological attempt to resolve my issues. I was notified early September 2012, mid to the end of September, I contacted the Food and Nutrition Office, left messages, no one called me back. And then, when I called again, I spoke with the director of Food and Nutrition, and she and I had a discussion, but never really resolved my issue. On September 27th, I emailed the superintendent's office. On September 28th, I received an email back from the superintendent's office stating that this matter would be passed on to his acting chief operations officer. Beginning of October of 2012, I called the chief operations officers, office several times, and never received, never got a chance to speak with her. I was directed back to the Food and Nutrition Office, and I spoke again with the director on October 10th, and still awaiting a response. I take issue with the soy milk or milk substitute not being provided for my child, and there are several other children at his school that are affected. I also, in my statement, I have a documentation from his doctor saying that it's a severe allergy to cow's milk, that he goes into anaphylactic shock if they were to give him cow's milk.
Thank you, Ms. Shay Fels. We will have Brett Superintendent to have staff follow up with you. She's on the way. Thank you. Colleagues, any questions with regard to follow-up items? Seeing none, we are returning to executive session at this time, before we adjourn, and so, we will adjourn public session, the public meeting. I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Ms. Boston. Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. We are adjourning the public session and returning to executive session. All in favor?